United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that, council member. And let me check with our city attorney. Do we have anything to report out from closed session from our last meeting, which was about six weeks ago?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so let's get started with our agenda. We have our regular agenda, but to begin, we have a super exciting way to start our agenda. These are my favorite things to do whenever we have an opportunity to recognize incredible things that our young people are doing in our city. It's a very, very special meeting. I'm super excited to recognize our Hollister Tremor girls. So all the girls that are seated here with the black shirts and the white stripes, I mean, let's give them a round of applause just for being here. And I'm gonna tell you all why we are here to honor them today. So we're gonna present a special proclamation to these amazing young women, the Hollister Tremors 2011 Girls Hurricanes Team. So it's my honor as a mayor of this city to recognize this exceptional group of young athletes because of what they've been doing for the last couple of years. It's no small feat. So in the last two years, this team has showed extraordinary dedication, teamwork, and sportsmanship. They've had a record of 36 wins, lots of wins, very nice, nine losses, and 11 ties. They brought pride to our city again and again. They've won top-division titles in both the Fall 2023 Thriller and the Spring 2024 Central Valley Cup, reached the semifinals in major tournaments in Tahoe, Lake Tahoe, and Las Vegas, and were crowned elite bracket champions at the California Cup, defeating the number seven and the number one ranked teams in North Cal. And my understanding, those are super competitive and prestigious tournaments, so congratulations on those incredible accomplishments. And now they've made history by becoming the first team in the Tremors Club history to be accepted into the National Premier League. So this is a first for both boys and girls teams. So congratulations. This is an incredible accomplishment. So on behalf of the City Council and the people of Hollister, I am proud to present this official proclamation to all of your team members, and I'm gonna show it to you in a little bit. And I especially want to recognize the head coach, Coach Armando Gonzalez, and his coaches, Coach Tim Chialla and Tim, I'm sorry, and William Sehha. Thank you for all the hard work and for bringing these girls up to speed. What I understand is when this club first started, they were not at this level. And it took a lot of hard work and dedication from the coaches and also from their families, their parents especially. So thank you for your leadership and commitment to this team, and congratulations to all. You are an inspiration to all of us, and we are super proud of you. So I am going to present this proclamation that summarizes on the proclamation what I just read in more official city language, but it's basically a proclamation, and this just recognizes officially on today's City Council meeting, the incredible accomplishments that you have done. So as I am, some of you saw me walking in, I'm hobbling around a little bit. I have a little injury on my leg. Girls, we're gonna have to get used to that. If you're athletes, that will happen too, but it also happens to you a lot as you get older. So that's what's happening to me here. But I'm gonna ask for two people to come and help me. So if Sky and Addie, can you come and help me as I hobble down to take down this proclamation? And then I'm gonna ask the whole team and the coaches if you want to come up here really quick. And then I, and my, my understanding is that there's two young women that are, that want to speak. So Sky and Addie, just wait for me over there, okay, girls? And then if the two girls want to go ahead and do, and speak really quick, and then the team, if you can come up here as your team captains, I think they are, are gonna speak. So if we have all the team come up here, actually, I'm gonna walk down, so then I'll, so then I'll stand here with you. And the two girls that are gonna speak, they're gonna just talk a little bit about their team.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Drew, and this is my teammate Devon Chialla, and we're two proud team members of the Hollister Hurricanes. First, we would like to thank our Mayor Stevens for this incredible opportunity to honor our team's major accomplishment that we accomplished making history. And a massive shout out to the Hollister Tremors soccer team for being the amazing home to our club, to being the amazing home to our team. We'd like to thank our Hurricane parents for making this possible. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for you all. And our, our team has been on this journey for six years, starting from the bottom and climbing our way to the top as a team. Over these years, our team has gone through major losses that has left us at the bottom, but each time we worked even harder that led us to our major victories. Every loss and every win has shaped us as a team you see today. This truly shows our dedication and determination as a team to strive to the, to be the best versions of ourselves. On top of this, we're not just high-level players, we're also high-level students. Most of our players have held straight A's across multiple school years and have held a GPA of 3.5 or higher.
Thank you, Kylie, our incoming freshman ASV president for Hollister High. I'm Devon Chialla, and I'm one of the original members of the Hurricane team, and I have watched as we have grown and gotten stronger together. As we made our way up to the higher brackets, we experienced multiple challenges as our competition got more intense, especially in the past two years. Last fall, we started our journey towards NPL by starting off in the Premier Bracket. Each and every one of us are so excited to not only be the first NPL team in club history, but to experience this opportunity together. We really were only able to make it this far because of the bond we all built together on and off the field. I know I'm supposed to be talking about my favorite memory while being on the Hurricane soccer team, but really, the whole experience has been very memorable. I would also like to echo what Kylie said. We are extremely grateful for our coaches and all the work they have done to get us this far. Along with thanking the Tremors Soccer Club, we would also like to thank the parents as well as the city of Hollister. In order to keep improving and reach our next goal of competing at the ECNL level, we are seeking community sponsors to help us along the way so we can continue our journey, as well as putting Hollister on the map regionally and nationally for women's soccer.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and everyone else. So just quickly, I'd like to do a few acknowledgements. I'd like to acknowledge Hurricanes Team Manager. She makes everything run. She signs us up for every tournament. She signs us up for games, fields, finds hotels that we're staying at, the whole shebang, not only for one team, but for the last couple of teams, two, two teams. And her daughter only plays on one. So huge shout out to Melissa Drew for helping us out with that. Next, I'd like to thank Melissa Guevara. She's also, she helps out with a lot of the other stuff too, with looking up hotels and planning food, lunches for tournaments, taking pictures at games. So thank you, Melissa. And then I don't see her, but I wanna shout out Cheryl Lovejoy. She's been in charge of getting our apparel, our, our new team logo, sponsorship forms, what is it, reel type stuff for social media and whatnot. So appreciate you, Cheryl Lovejoy. And then, and then lastly, Nick Lovejoy, who has, over the past six years, taken photos of our girls at games to give them, you know, you know, them and the family's photos for, you know, memories. So thank you, Nick. And then I want to give a shout out. So Coach Tim Chialla can be here today. We started this team six years ago, but three years prior to that, we battled in rec as opponents. So making that team has been a huge part of this, this team. So I appreciate you, Tim. Thanks so much. And then Coach William Sehha, for the past two years, has been kind of leading our, our practices and getting these girls really in tip-top shape. So I like to introduce the girls to multiple voices, so that way they, you know, one coach may say something, another coach may say it a different way, and they, they get it. So thank you, Coach Will and Coach Tim. And then lastly, I just want to thank kind of the backbone of this team, and it's, it's, it's actually our parents. So I, I'm constantly bragging about the parents, because if anyone who's played team sports with, you know, 15, 16, 17 different players and families, you know, you spend a lot of time together, and sometimes things don't go as they go, or sometimes there might be issues or whatnot. We, it's been six years, we've had no major issues. They all respect each other, love each other, which is a huge thing, which I think has helped propel us to where we are at. So thank you to the Hurricane parents. So we appreciate you guys, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna ask you girls to kind of crunch, scrunch up, so then we can do photos, and then these young, these are up-and-coming tremor, these are up-and-coming girls that are gonna help me with the certificate.
All right, ladies, before we do that, can I get our shirt, everybody, get to the mayor, please. So here is Bella Duzmon, where Lexi Go. And then Lexi Sehha, these are two of our captains. We have the shirt, so that's our, our team logo, and on the other side is our club logo. All the girls signed it with their names and coaches and team managers, so we appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, girls. I love it.
Last but not least, Claire Lovejoy. We have the black.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna present this certificate. And we can take pictures. We just want to take a picture. So these young ladies are gonna be in this picture, and then they're gonna, then they're gonna move on. Okay?
Why is taken over?
Three, one, two.
Got it.
Hi. Well, congratulations again.
Great work.
Good, ladies. Keep it up.
Yeah, keep it up.
Keep going.
Congratulations, ladies.
Okay, well, that was fun. So let, we're gonna move on with our agenda. One more congratulations to the Tremors. Look forward to see what else is happening with you girls. So our next item on the agenda is retirement recognition honoring Police Captain Eric Olson. So I believe the chief is coming up, so come up, and let's give Police Captain Eric Olson a round of applause for his service to our city as he walks up.
I want to stand over here. One of the last orders I'm giving him.
Last orders.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the, thank you all for the opportunity to publicly honor and celebrate the retirement of a remarkable man, Captain Eric Olson. In police radio, our code, our 10-code, when we broadcast that we're 10-8, it means that we're on duty. That's what that means. And coincidentally, Captain Olson began his journey with the Hollister Police Department on October 8th, 2001, 10-8. I think it was an early indicator of his commitment to our, our community, always being on duty. From the beginning, Eric demonstrated what it means to be committed, not just to the job, but to a calling. Over the last 24 years, he has worn many hats and served in numerous roles, each one with integrity, professionalism, and unwavering sense of purpose. As a patrol officer, he served on the front lines, protecting and serving our community day in and day out. He later became a UNET Task Force agent, working undercover in some of the most complex and dangerous narcotics investigations in our region. He played a crucial role in keeping our streets safer, even putting himself in harm's way so others wouldn't have to. Eric also took the time to shape the future of the department by becoming a field training officer, helping mold and train the next generation of officers. His mentorship has left a lasting impact on so many of the men and women who wear this uniform today. One of Captain Olson's most significant and lasting contributions came through his work as a traffic, in traffic safety. As an officer, this is before he even became a sergeant, as an officer, he pursued and secured an Office of Traffic Safety grant for our department. Every year, he did that, and he got 14 consecutive years of grants from OTS, which accumulated hundreds of thousands of dollars in reimbursement to our city. Along with the grants, he says, he also received multiple state awards and recognition for our public safety or traffic safety initiatives. This is no small feat. It's a legacy of innovation, foresight, and dedication that will continue to benefit our department and our community long after today. As he moved up the ranks from sergeant to lieutenant to captain, Eric continued to lead by example. He served as a range master, ensuring our officers were trained and prepared. He has supervised the Investigation Bureau, Records Bureau, and Animal Control. He never asked for recognition, but instead put in the work, often behind the scenes, often late at night, on weekends, birthdays, and holidays, without complaint, and with complete commitment. His leadership extended beyond Hollister. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy and is an instructor at the prestigious Post-Schirman Block Leadership Institute. As an instructor, Eric has trained frontline police supervisors from all across the state. The impact of his knowledge and his guidance reaches far beyond our city limits. But for those of us at the department, his greatest legacy is not just in what he accomplished, but also it's how he carried himself. Captain Olson is the kind of leader we all strive to be: steady, thoughtful, honest, a mentor to many, a true friend to all, a trusted confidant whose loyalty and honor has never been in question. He has been the instrument and the impetus for real positive change in our department. His wisdom, his perspective, and calm, steady leadership have guided us through challenging times and helped us become a better organization. Before joining law enforcement, Eric also served our country honorably as a member of the United States Army. That sense of service, selflessness, and courage, and discipline has defined every chapter of his life. Later this month, we will say farewell, not just to a dedicated captain, but also to a man who has helped shape this department, this community in lasting and meaningful ways. Captain Olson, on behalf of myself and the men and women of the Hollister Police Department, we thank you for your years, the years you gave, for the sacrifices you made, for the example you set, and for unwavering dedication to the city of Hollister and its people. You leave behind big shoes to fill, but even bigger legacy to admire. You've made us all better, and for that, we will always be grateful. Please join me in congratulating Captain Eric Olson on his retirement and in thanking him for a career of outstanding service, leadership, and devotion to the people of Hollister.
Okay, tough to little follow that. Those of you who know me know how difficult it is for me to stand up here and listen to people talk about me. However, any bit of success that I've had individually is attributed to the great men in Wyoming and that I've had the pleasure of working next to at the department. Leaders like Chief Renoso really paved the way for officers to be successful throughout their career, and he's done that for me. I have worked for Chief Renoso back when he was a sergeant, up through captain, and now as the chief. And I couldn't, I can't ask for a better friend, mentor, and chief. So thank you for this, for City Council, for acknowledging this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Captain Olson, on your retirement. Good luck. Have fun. Enjoy your time. You've, you've put in a lot of, many years of good service, so congratulations, and, and thank you for all the service you've provided to the citizens of Hollister. We really appreciate it. Thank you. So our next person we want to honor, another, oh, wait, did we just have, did we have two or just one? Okay, so we, okay, I thought we had one other retiree we were gonna honor, but I, but they're, okay. So next one is a presentation on Central Coast Community Energy, or better known as 3CE Annual Update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens and council members. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of Central Coast Community Energy. My name is Sophia Schwartzky, and I serve as the Community Relations Manager for the Northern Region of Central Coast Community Energy's service area. And like the mayor said, we are better known as 3CE. I'm here to share highlights about 3CE's recent activities, programs, and ongoing efforts to support your community. And before I begin, I do want to take a moment to thank Councilmember Resendez and City Manager Mirioni for serving on 3CE's policy and operations boards. We truly appreciate your leadership and contributions. So as you may know, 3CE is the public agency that sources energy for the Central Coast. We work in partnership with PG&E, who manages the transmission and delivery of that energy to your homes and businesses. 3CE serves 30 cities and the counties of Santa Cruz, Monterey, San Benito, San Luis Obispo, and Santa Barbara. Today, 3CE provides clean and renewable energy to 1.2 million people, which is about 94% of eligible customers. 3CE is on a pathway to delivering our customers with 100% clean and renewable energy. Last year, we delivered 409 megawatts of renewable energy, which is enough energy to power more than 350,000 homes. By doing so, we avoided over 445,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions, which is equivalent to taking 105,000 gas-powered cars off the road for an entire year. 3CE currently has contracts to supply 64% of our load with renewable energy by October of 2028, and we have additional contracts pending approval that could increase this number from 5 to 17%. This puts us well ahead of state requirements and moves us closer to a carbon-free future. So at 3CE, we have received many questions about the role that battery storage plays in this energy transition, so I'd like to quickly review that with you today. Batteries are essential to the energy transition, and just as importantly, affordability. Batteries capture renewable energy when the sun is shining and the wind is blowing, then release it later in the day when demand is high. They reduce fossil fuel reliance during peak hours, lowering electricity rates. Residential batteries provide backup power and store cheap renewable energy for residential use during peak hours. I do want to show you a real-world example illustrating the value of battery storage. During Labor Day weekend in 2022, California issued its most recent FLEX Alert, which is a statewide call to, to reduce energy use during a major heat wave. So you might remember getting a text message on your phone asking you to conserve energy to avoid rolling blackouts. This graph shows the statewide energy mix from that day. The red area represents fossil fuels, which made up the largest portion. The green shows renewable sources like solar and wind, which peak during the day and then drop off sharply at sunset. I want you to take a look at the thin orange lines that you see at the bottom and top of the screen there. The bottom is batteries charging during daylight hours. At the top, those same batteries discharge energy back into the grid when it's needed most. So this graph is showing a more recent heat wave. This is July 4th of last year, where despite another period of extremely high energy demand, there was no need for a FLEX Alert to avoid blackouts. The graph tells the story. The green bar representing renewable energy grew taller as more solar came online, and the red bar representing fossil fuels became smaller. But most notably, that orange battery bar more than tripled, meaning batteries charged during the day and discharged power during peak evening hours, providing critical support when our state needed it the most. So I wanted to show you these graphs to really show how batteries extend renewable energy's usefulness into the evening hours. So at 3CE, we have received many questions from community members about the safety of utility-scale battery storage. And I do want to take a moment to highlight a few key facts. First, firstly, 3CE has no power purchase agreements with indoor battery facilities. All of the battery storage projects that 3CE contracts with must use containerized systems equipped with individual fire suppression units, and they must meet the latest fire and building code standards. So this graph here shows you the safety data. Battery system failure rates have dropped 98% since 2018, even as global battery deployment has increased by more than 25,000%. 3CE is invested in innovative energy storage technology, and one example I want to highlight for you is the Willa Rock Energy Storage Center. This is a project that will use compressed air to power turbines, and once it's completed, it will be the largest compressed air energy storage project in the world. And of this project's output, 200 megawatts are reserved solely for 3CE customers. The Artina Solar Plus Storage Project, the Atlas Solar Project, and the Victory Pass Solar Plus Storage Project are among some of the latest projects 3CE has invested in. Together, these three projects will supply enough clean energy to power the homes of 263,000 3CE customers. The other piece of 3CE's mission that I wanted to speak with you about this evening is connecting with the communities that we serve. Our outreach team is active across our service area. We sponsor local events, we host webinars, and we lead workshops to raise awareness on and inform our energy programs. To better meet the needs of our diverse communities, 3CE has hired additional bilingual staff. We've increased the number of translated materials we have, and we have developed an action plan focused on serving underserved communities. We've also strengthened our partnerships with community-based organizations, and our customer service hotline now offers support in more than 150 languages. 3CE has programs that empower customers to accelerate their own electrification and reduce energy costs. Our flagship program is the Electrify Your Ride Program, which offers up to $4,000 towards the purchase of an electric vehicle. Our other programs support customers in switching to electric household appliances, constructing all-electric homes, investing in electric ag equipment, and installing home battery storage. 3CE also offers programs for member agencies like the city of Hollister to support electrifying your fleet, installing EV chargers, purchasing electric buses, and adopting reach codes. This year alone, 3CE has over $300,000 in funding available to the city of Hollister. Since 3CE began in 2018, nearly 7,000 customers have benefited from 3CE's program, programs, putting more than $11 million back into our community. Over $4 million of that support went directly to underserved community members. Over $4 million of that support went directly to underserved community members. So this slide highlights how Hollister has taken advantage of 3CE's programs. To date, 3CE has invested over $431,000 into your community through our Ag Electrification, Electrify Your Ride, and New Construction Electrification programs. Your city has not yet participated in our member agency programs, which is one reason I wanted to come introduce myself this evening and offer myself as a resource to help your city get involved in that process. And just for context, we've included the City of San Juan Batista as a benchmark to help illustrate your city's participation levels in our programs. And I'm almost done here, but before I close, I did want to provide a brief legislative update. So the federal mega bill known as HR1, or the Big Beautiful Bill, does have impacts on 3CE's customers. As you may know, the bill eliminates tax credits for electric vehicles after September 30th and for home energy upgrades after December 31st. Our customers often stack 3CE's rebates with these federal incentives. So we're really working hard to encourage your constituents to electrify now, if that's something that they want to do, so that they are able to combine the incentives that 3CE offers with the federal incentives before they're gone. HR1 also eliminates tax credits for utility-scale solar and wind projects that have not broken ground by the end of 2026. These projects are cheaper and faster to build than the natural gas alternative, so their construction being delayed could result in increased energy costs for our customers. To address this, 3CE is supporting the Pathways Initiative, its SB 540, which would create a regional energy market, including California and other Western states. This would allow us to sell excess renewable energy that we have in the middle of the day to reduce emissions across the entire region. And our calculations show us that this bill would save Californians nearly $800 million per year. And then the final piece of the legislative update is that 3CE is looking into addressing resource adequacy trading through legislation next year as another opportunity for us to reduce costs for our customers. So that is just about all that I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I have my contact information up on the screen, and I invite you to reach out to me directly. But thank you again for your time this evening, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilmember Resendez.
Thank you. Where do you get your funding, from the state or the federal government?
So our funding comes from ratepayers. So the way that Central Coast Community Energy works is that you used to have to have your energy supplied to you by PG&E. But now that Hollister has enrolled in 3CE, 3CE has taken over the role of energy procurement from PG&E. So you still have a PG&E bill for energy and transmission, but it's just 3CE that is billing you for the actual generation portion of your bill.
So I'm getting, what I'm wondering is, you said that the Big Beautiful Bill will impact your program, but then you said because the people who benefit from your program often stack onto the benefits from the federal government. That doesn't mean that the people that benefit from your program are not going to receive the benefits from your program, right?
Yes, no, you're exactly correct. What we're trying to encourage our customers to do is electrify now so that they can not only benefit from our program, but they can also receive the federal funding for...
So my point is regardless of what happens in Congress, our constituents who we represent can still receive the same benefits from your program that they're receiving regardless of what happens to Congress, right?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. 3CE's programs are still here. It's just that we want people to be able to get the most funding.
I understand. I just think when you're presenting us information and our public, we need to be very careful on how we word that so that they know that they can still receive your benefit, the people who represent locally, regardless of what happens on a national level. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions on this side? Go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you so much. I've always appreciated 3CE's presentations. I get a lot of residents that are confused about if they want to go solar, like who they should go to. They get a lot of, I guess, sales calls. So does 3CE have recommendations, or have they been vetted by someone?
So 3CE, what we have is a residential battery storage program. So I can leave some business cards with the clerk, and anybody who has questions is welcome to reach out to me, and I can get them in touch with our program staff to help walk them through that process. So we don't have incentives for solar panels, but what the residential battery storage program does is it allows you to store that energy that your solar panels produce in the middle of the day. It's cheap, it's clean, and then you can use it later on in the evening during peak times from 4:00 to 9:00, for example, and save money on your energy bill that way. So I'll definitely get in touch with you to share more information on that program.
Any other questions? No. Thank you for that great presentation. We appreciate it. Thanks for all the information, lots of really good information in there. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to our Public Input section of the agenda. So this is a time for anybody that wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. This is a time to do it. You need to just fill out a speaker card that are available in the lobby. Bring it up to our city clerk up here, and then she will call your name, or she will call your name, and then you'll come up to the podium, state your name, your city for the records, and then speak to the council. And if you're on Zoom, click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're using your phone for Zoom, then press asterisk nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and then for a total of 30 minutes per subject matter. So please note that state law prohibits any of the city council from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. So city clerk, do we have any speaker cards for this section?
Yes, we have one speaker, Todd Dubois.
Mr. Dubois.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Soy Guatemaló. That's what my Latino friends call me. I'm here tonight to talk about economic development, because I sat next to the mayor in the town hall, and all of you have been talking about economic development. And the project that I've been trying to bring forward has massive economic development benefits. And I want to just kind of touch on those, because I'm not getting a lot of warm hugs from the city. So this project's right in downtown, and annual revenues for the project would be about $10 million a year. And with the Economic Development Multiplier, write that down, Economic Development Multiplier, that's a $30 million annual economic boost to downtown Hollister. So like 100 times what the rally would be. So I think if economic development is important, we should talk about this a little more. Just since you don't know me, really, I don't know you guys, really. I retired when I was 36, not because I made a lot of money, because I made other people dump truck loads of money. So I'm here tonight to tell you, this project will make the city dump truck loads of money. And if you're not interested, I don't know what to say. I'll wait a few years and come back later. But there's really not a lot of downside, and there's huge economic upside. Again, the projections I've emailed to you, not done by me, these are not my numbers. Those were numbers done by a woman, the licensed operator in Ojai. She runs a couple of facilities, and she did that pro forma that you have. Shows a $10 million annual run rate. Again, Economic Development Multiplier, about $30 million economic input every year. So let's walk the talk, and let's do some economic development. I'm here to help, and I would much rather partner with you guys than do it the hard way, obviously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dubois. Appreciate it. Any other speaker cards on this section?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Do any members of the council have any brief questions or comments on the consent items? Councilmember Morales, sorry, go ahead.
There was additional information sent out, about 7.2. We just want to make sure everybody saw it, otherwise.
I did not see it.
Okay, did you want to pull that so that we can discuss that, or did you just want to point that out?
I just wanted to point it out. It's not my question.
Okay, okay, okay. Thanks for that. Any other questions or comments from any of the consent items?
Well, I have two appointments. I didn't see that last piece of information. I didn't, was it by email? What was it? How was it transmitted?
Email.
Okay.
To each council member.
Okay. Just recently?
Yes, sir. Got the question today, answered the question today.
Say again.
I would be happy to, why don't we pull this item?
Let's pull the item.
Mayor, and then I can review what it was I said, because that's just factual information. It's not attorney-client privilege. And then we can go from there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So other than 7.2, do we, any other items, any other items that, questions or comments? Okay. So clerk, are there any public comments on consent items?
There are no public comments for any of the consent calendar items.
Okay. So any, so can I then move to get a motion on those items on the consent agenda except 7.2?
Mayor Stevens, I'll move to adopt.
Second.
And so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so consent items pass except for 7.2, so we've pulled that. So can we hear 7.2?
Yes, and then I think Mr. Rodriguez also has a comment on 7.2 after, when you open it back up. So there was an inquiry regarding the appointment of Mr. Rodriguez to the Planning Commission, since he's also a LAFCO commissioner. Any conflict is for the appointed individual to manage, and Government Code Section 1099 is pretty clear on when a conflict could potentially exist. We can't advise him individually, but he could seek an opinion from the Attorney General on this. The FPPC does not give advice on incompatible offices, only the Attorney General does. So if Mr. Rodriguez accepts the Planning Commission position, and it's determined to be an incompatible office, by law, the LAFCO position is automatically abandoned. And if there is a conflict, and during the time he holds both offices, his, any LAFCO votes at that time could be void. So that was the status update regarding this, but really it's up to Mr. Rodriguez once council appoints.
Okay, great. Thanks for that explanation. Councilmember Resendez, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that information. So I didn't pull it, and it looks like some of my colleagues did not get that information or inquire about it. Are you allowed to say which one of the city council members actually inquired about that?
So my practice is to just say a member of council. That's what I've done.
A member of the council, okay.
Corrected. That council member wants to say it was them, of course they can.
Okay, so yeah, I'm just curious. If I was a member of council, and I really had a problem with this, I would actually pull it and not use it as a political weapon to try to forward my own agenda? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on that item? Did you have a comment? Councilmember Morales, go ahead.
I asked the question because I knew of the potential consequences and wasn't sure if my fellow council members did. This is not my appointment. I have no issue with this. I just wanted to make sure that there was information available before a decision was made. That was it.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Okay, so do we have then any speaker cards on this one? Okay, do you have more questions? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. So attorney, city attorney, so I did receive the information. I do understand it clearly. I did my own research. So I know that there's different options that we can proceed in. Number one, we could make the appointment tonight, given that it was a last-minute inquiry. We can make the appointment tonight. If the LAFCO member would like to consult with, I would recommend consulting with staff and with their legal team, then they have every right to do that before the next Planning Commission meeting, do they not?
Yeah, he has every right to inquire.
Absolutely. And if we made the appointment tonight, is that then going to automatically void their LAFCO appointment, depending on what the determination is from the staff or the LAFCO attorney?
If it is found to be an incompatible office, at that point, he would automatically forfeit the LAFCO position, similar to if you had a Planning Commission appointment, and then you were a member of council. You automatically forfeit the Planning Commission appointment to become that member of council.
Thank you. My next question is, would they then have to be sworn in? Just because we appoint them, they then need to be sworn in at the next Planning Commission to complete that appointment?
I assume, city clerk, I assume that you swear them in.
We would swear them in at their earliest convenience, and considering the planning commission meeting is coming up, then we would do it, you know, sooner rather than later.
And that would then be the deadline, whether or not they come and they get sworn in or not?
It depends on if an incompatible office is found.
Right, right. But there's a potential that there's no incompatible office found.
Yeah, if there's not one found, then he's fine.
And city council members, and mayors, and supervisors sit on both LAFCO and the city and the county here.
I believe that is true. The LAFCO board is made up of council members, supervisors, and members of the public.
I think that, for me, when you serve on multiple agencies and you think there's a potential conflict, then you should consult with your staff, your legal team, with them, and you recuse yourself if and when you need to, because we do it all the time. That's my opinion, but I'd like to go forward with the appointment, that'd be my recommendation, and know that we still have time to, a little bit more time to look into it.
Definitely council's discretion.
Thank you.
I mean, it sounds like that was what, the information that we got from our attorney was that the onus is on the person who's being appointed, who's will be filling both. So we would consider that, we would consider that, right? Whether or not he, that we believe that this person is able to make that distinction.
Correct.
So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and ask Mr. Rodriguez to come to the podium and make his comment, and remember you have three minutes.
Hello, Honorable City Council. So I have consulted with Jennifer Stevens.
Stevenson.
Stevenson. So at this point in time, I would accept the appointment and then resolve if there are any discrepancies or possible conflict of interest, deal with that at a later matter. But at this point, I would be ready to accept the appointment to the City Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission.
So if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, and, okay, so I'm gonna, here's just one little question. I'm gonna assume by the statement that you made that you will be prioritizing Planning Commission if, in fact, there is a conflict. Is that your...
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so anything else, Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, no.
You still have a little bit of time.
No, the only, the only other comment would just be the same thing, that, you know, reviewing LAFCO, it is a separate agency. I know that, you know, you serve on LAFCO. I also know that there's, Board of Supervisors serve on LAFCO, and LAFCO kind of serves more as an intermediary for land use decisions. Like, I wouldn't be up here accepting that appointment if I did feel it was a conflict of interest, or I did feel like doing it in bad faith. So, yeah, so, but anyways, thank you for the, letting me clarify.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so can, so can I call for, get a motion for 7.2, filling vacancies on both the Hollister Airport Advisory Commission and Planning Commission?
Mayor Stevens, I move to adopt.
Aye, second.
Okay, so let's go ahead and get a roll call vote on this one.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, and this also includes other members, Mr. Hernandez and the appointee to the Airport Commission. So thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, so let's, uh, move on to our next item. Let's see where we are on. Public hearing eight point one, a resolution approving an update to development impact fees to reflect cumulative cost adjustments from 2022 through 2025, and acknowledging the city's intent to conduct a comprehensive fee study in accordance with AB 602. So let's get the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, as you stated, this is a resolution authorizing the adjustment of development impact fees to reflect cost changes not applied since 2022, and acknowledge the city's intent to, uh, to conduct a comprehensive, uh, fee study in accordance with, uh, state legislation AB 602. Just a little bit on the background, uh, the city council adopted, uh, several resolutions in the past that establish, uh, updating development impact fees, uh, based on comprehensive, uh, next studies. As part of the resolutions that were adopted, uh, city council authorized future adjustments to the fees using, uh, industry standard, um, construction cost index or similar, uh, index. However, uh, the annual adjustment, uh, were not applied from 2022 through 2025. As a result, the fees currently collected for, uh, new developments, uh, don't accurately reflect the city's actual cost, uh, to provide the public infrastructure or the services. Uh, to address the missed annual adjustment and maintain legal compliance, staff recommends updating the current, uh, development impact fees based on the, um, adjustments stated before, uh, using the, uh, industry, uh, industry standard, uh, construction cost index. And that concludes the presentation, or the resolution.
Thank you for that report. Um, so do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Resendez, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I'm just curious, how did we miss those impact fees since nineteen, sorry, 2022?
So there was a hold on them originally, as we were going through the general plan process, and then they were missed in subsequent years, and then we were gonna bring it back for the budget, and we had a noticing timeframe that we were trying to meet with all of the budget challenges, and so it made it to this meeting here. But this was one that we had caught through the process of going through, uh, the other fees. So this one, we should have probably brought this about a year ago when discovered, and were, um, gathering up and seeing where the general plan was gonna go. Typically, you would, um, once your general plan's adopted, then you would go through and do your, your new studies that are based off the general plan, and set your impact fees, and that's where Christian's mentioning, uh, ultimately bringing forward, um, new impact fee studies. But that's kind of where that's, was at, so that, it was, it was on our office to, to not, to bring those forward, and they weren't brought forward.
Okay, thank you. I probably should have asked this before, my apologies. And then, just, uh, so the public is aware, um, approximately how much money did we miss from 2022 till now?
Oh, we'd have to go back and, and calculate that, every project's different, and so, um, that's something that we could go back and calculate. It would take, uh, considerable amount of time. It's not impossible, but I don't have that, uh, at our, at our hands, in our hands this evening.
Okay, I did see percentages on the report, so those are just the percentages of the individual study fees that we missed?
Correct, so what we would have to do is go back and look at each individual fee, and then apply the...
A member of the public can do that as well. I don't, again, I just wanted to put that out there so that they have that information. I'm not asking staff to do that.
Okay.
Thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Resendez. Any questions on this side of the dice? So just a quick little timeline, um, question. If, if adopted, when, uh, when would we expect this to be, begin and to be completed?
It will be 60 days after adoption of the resolution.
And then at that point, then, I'm assuming it comes back to us for a report, um, to city council?
No, at that point, we could make the adjustment to the, uh, current, uh, development impact fee schedule, and then any new project that, uh, develops will have to pay the new fee.
So it does not need to come back here?
Correct.
So this, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So similar to how, um, at budget time, we brought forward our user fees, which were, um, you know, the individual fees that are, that are paid, we brought that forward for a, uh, an inflationary, uh, increase. We would, if the study's not done, then we would bring this forward as part of budget next year. So these would typically be a budget item that are brought forward each time, and then, um, and then reanalyzed as, um, you do new studies.
Okay, okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, that's all I had. You had another follow-up question, Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, I'm just, again, I'm stuck on that cost, and I don't want you guys to do the work, but would you say that it's significant, that it's a large amount? I mean, I'm just curious, because, yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's not gonna be very, I mean, it's probably in the six-figure range.
Okay, all right, that's good enough. Thank you so much.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Okay, so, um, I'm going to move us along, and do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor Stevens, you do want to open the public hearing for this item.
Oh. Okay, so we're opening a public hearing now at, um, seven twenty-seven. Um, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, so I'm closing the public hearing on this one, um, at the same time, seven twenty-seven, and, uh, then, uh, we, can I then get a, a motion from staff? I'm sorry, from one of council, from our council?
Move to adopt.
Aye, second.
Okay, and so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, thank you, sir. So the resolution passes. Okay, so let's move us along to, um, item eight point two, a resolution adopting a temporary annexation policy during the 2040 general plan update. So can we have a staff report, please?
That's for, that presentation's for the next item. This item, I don't have a presentation for you, it's a relatively brief item. This item is a resolution and a public hearing to adopt that resolution for a temporary annexation policy. As the council is aware, we've been directed to update the 2040 general plan in accordance with the council's direction from April 21st of 2025. We had a public hearing discussing the general plan, got direction, and then we received, um, a resolution was adopted by the council on June 2nd of this year to issue an, um, an amendment to our contract, and that work for the general plan update is underway. This policy would replace the motion that was made by the city council on November 6th of 2023. There was not a written policy adopted at that time, but the council motioned to hold and defer acceptance of annexation and general plan amendment applications by the planning division during the city's update of a comprehensive update to our general plan. This policy is recommended to be adopted in writing for the council tonight. This policy will allow for the, um, applications that have already been authorized and submitted and are underway that we discussed in April to continue. They will all be amended as directed by the council to follow the general plan's adoption. That was the direction on those projects, so they will have no update on the general plan. And then this policy will also allow for the Toro Petroleum Gas Station on McCray Street to be annexed. This is a part of an agreement that was made and signed by the city as part of the sale of adjacent right-of-way surplus land, um, to annex that island into the city. Staff has looked at that, it will not affect the general plan update, because there's no development proposed. It's an existing gas station, it's a, it's a jurisdictional change, so that can proceed ahead, and this policy would allow that to happen. Otherwise, no new applications would be allowed to be submitted under this policy until a general plan is adopted by the city.
Okay, good. Thank you for that report. Councilmember Resendez, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is a big topic for us, right? Where are we at with the general plan? Like, what are, where are we at with it? Can you just tell the public where we're at in the process right now?
Sure, so we've initiated the, uh, modeling and traffic modeling. We've prepared the revised build-out counts that are required, so we looked at the build-out because we had to put the build-out of the 2024 general plan into the 2023 land use map as directed by the council, so that we can utilize the studies that were done for the EIR to reduce costs and stay within that addendum range. So we've authorized the build-out after reviewing that, and so modeling is underway.
All right, so we're moving forward, full steam ahead. Um, the, the reason I say this is a huge topic for us is because the constituents raised signatures because they weren't happy with the other general plan, and they're expecting, because they raised signatures, for us to complete the general plan. So do we have, and, and what we said back then was, we were concerned about time, money, and I forget the last thing, maybe one of you guys can help me out with that, but it was the time and the money. So let's look at the timing. Do we have any idea of how soon we're going to have this come back to us, so that we can make a final adoption of it?
So the timeline that was adopted and proposed in the scope of work that was provided, the council was a nine-month timeframe, and again, that was authorized on June 2nd, and we executed that contract in mid-June.
All right, well, so I'm gonna say we are about, gosh, you're gonna have to help me out, Ms. Kelly, seven months away from that deadline. If we were to, um, make any changes that would impact the general plan, it would essentially reset this process, correct?
I would not say it wouldn't without looking at what changes you're proposing, so yes.
All right. All right, so again, for me, that's what I'm mostly concerned about. And then lastly, when we get to the finish line of that general plan, we can always make amendments to rezone. Let's say somebody wants to put a, um, a commercial business, uh, over something that's currently zoned as residential. We can always make an amendment to do that, and then we can identify to meet housing density needs, another zone, another area to zone for residential, for Rena, can we not?
Yes, that's absolutely correct, and that, that's what's being proposed on these individual applications. You know, they, that's why they have that process, is they can apply to say, I'd like to change the general plan related to my property. And that, and that's why there is a process, the reason that we propose a hold on those applications, because not only is that a costly, uh, process from a staff time perspective, but it's also a very costly process from an applicant perspective. And when you're doing a general plan update as the city, you're looking at land use, you're looking at your sphere, you're looking at policies around circulation, and all these things. So if you wanted to do a change, you could, as the city, propose that change in your document, saving the applicant time, and also not convoluting those two documents together.
Ms. Kelly, can you remind me, because I forgot, how long, how many years ago, I should say, did we start this process?
The original, uh, request for the RFP, request for proposals, was authorized in 2018, and the contract kicked off in February 2020.
All right, and then just for the sake of getting information out to the public as well, when we talk about making amendments, I know we can make for a year, but isn't there a way that we can bundle some of those amendments and do one amendment with a whole swoop? When and if we're ready to do that, when we adopt the final, uh, general plan?
Yes, so just like the city's general plan update is essentially repealing and replacing the general plan, for lack of a better term, your updates can be as simple as typo correction, I would not recommend it, but they could be, to fully changing the general plan. It does not, the scale, um, and complexity of the general plan amendment is...
I just want to remind the public, um, anybody out there that's watching, for me, this is crucial, crucial, that we listen to the voice of the people who elected us here, um, and that we honor the timeline to get this general plan, uh, across to the finish line, and also to remind staff as well that we need this done. I know that you are fully capable, staff is fully capable, and I have faith in our contractors as long as we keep moving forward and don't make any more changes to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this side of the dice? No questions? Okay, yeah, I don't have any questions either. Okay, so then, um, I'm going to then check with the clerk. Any public comments on this one?
Uh, Mayor Stevens, you're gonna want to open the public hearing for this item, too.
Okay, open the public hearing on this one, seven thirty-one. Any comments?
Uh, yes, we do have a speaker, Jeffrey Small.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Jeffrey Small, Capital PFG. I'm the district's registered municipal advisor, that's the San Bonito High School District. We do have a, a few comments that we'd like to review with you tonight. First and, and most importantly, we're here because the, the temporary annexation policy will hinder and needlessly delay the district, the district's construction of a second high school. The district disagrees with the city's plans to halt all review and approval of applications related to zone, pre-zoning and general plan amendments until after the city's adoption and implementation of the 2040 general plan. By way of background, on July 1, 2025, the district sent the city a formal request to do two things. First, include the district's three parcels in the city's sphere of influence. And second, bring forward an application to LAFCO to annex the district's parcels and provide water and sewer services to the sites. In the letter, we discussed the importance of both the city and the district of a new high school, expressing the collaborative measures the city and the district had taken towards that goal in the past, and how we hope to continue to collaborate in the future. The district has yet to receive a formal response from the city. At this time, the district has no choice but to file a pre-zoning application. However, the temporary annexation policy would render our efforts futile and needlessly delay for an indeterminate amount of time the approval and ultimately, the construction of a new school for the city's high school students. Our ask, the district requests the city create an exception for the district's application for its two parcels. We refer to them as the Pura Vita parcel and the Barelli Felice parcel. Notably, the policy before you will affect all new applications submitted by private property owners. Additionally, the policy creates an exception for the city-initiated annexation of the property located at 1285 McCray. The district requests for a general plan amendment and annexation pertaining to the district-owned properties that serve an essential government function and service, that being public education. As a fellow public agency, just like the city, the district requests that the city revise the policy to clarify an exemption for similarly situated public agencies like the district. As explained in our July 1, 2025 letter, when the district engaged in the process to select the area in the northwest quarter of our new high school, the district did so in a collaboration with both the city and the California Department of Education. The district purchased its properties in March and July 2024, with the understanding that would be included. May I have another minute, please?
No, I'm sorry, we, we have to reserve public comment to three minutes, so I'm, I am sorry, but we do have to end your comment. I appreciate the comments that you've made, Mr. Small, but we do have to end your, your public comment, so thank you for that. Do we have question, any other comments, any other public comments?
There are no other public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. Um, Councilmember Resendez, go ahead.
Mayor Stevens, do you want to close the public hearing?
Okay, closing the public hearing, thank you. Um, seven thirty-nine. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Resendez.
Thank you. So first and foremost, I just want to put on the record that I had the absolute pleasure of sitting down with both these gentlemen the other day, for the first time in quite a while, and we did speak about this. So I just want to put that out there publicly for the sake of transparency. Number two, again, for the sake of transparency, when people come to the podium, I think that we need to, um, be very transparent and honest about where we're at, just like I spoke of the last, uh, speaker who was up here. So as of right now, as of right now, there is not enough funding to build that high school. The voters voted down that ballot measure, that's just a fact, we know that. So for me personally, for me personally, I, again, thank you both for having us over there. I want to continue the conversation, not only about that topic, because it's very important to the community members, but about many other ways that we can collaborate moving forward. I sincerely mean that. Second of all, we really, really, given the logistics of, that you're facing with building the second high school, not having all of the finance and the funding in place to do that, I don't think that's gonna change from now up until the time the general plan's done. And it really is not fair for us to tell one public or private agency or anybody else that we are going to honor a commitment to you and to set back the progress that we made that were being held accountable by the voters. So for me personally, I cannot support pausing our general plan at this moment to make any alterations or exceptions, uh, to the general plan. I sincerely look forward to working with you in the future. I want to work with everybody, and I think I said that when they came out here, all the applicants, but we really need to honor the commitment that the people of Hollister are asking us to do, to move forward with the timeline of the general plan, so that we can get this approved, and then make amendments at that time. Again, thank you both.
Thank you. Questions on this side? Vice, Vice Mayor Pacheco, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, Councilmember Resendez was searching for, I think, the third... Yeah, so Councilmember Resendez was searching for, I think, the third component. It was time, money, when it came to the general plan. And the third component, if memory serves, was that we literally had heard from the community as to what they wanted, right? They had already told us that they wanted to slow things down, get, fix some infrastructure, and get the general plan moved forward in a way that didn't, you know, annex multiple thousand, 3,000 or so acres around Buena Vista and other just areas, Fairview and other areas around town. So we literally had a directive from voters to make some changes. And I know that puts city staff a lot more work for you, and it puts projects in kind of limbo. We're definitely, to Councilmember Resendez's point, going to do this right, and we're gonna do it as economically with time as we can. But we're gonna do it right. So I think that might be what you were searching for, was literally the voters had spoken and were carrying out their wishes.
Whoops. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
So I, you know, I think at some point, we're gonna need to have somebody from finance come in and really lay out the financial forecast for the next five years, because, you know, unless you hit the lottery, the city of Hollister really doesn't, isn't gonna have the money to build the infrastructure that you're looking for. You know, we are looking at a financial decrease, and some of the decisions that the county has made are not gonna bring any revenue in the next foreseeable future. So any type of infrastructure expenditures are not gonna be there. So I think the reality is, our community, our high schools already, we should have done this probably 10 years ago in terms of the second high school to prepare for the future. If there is another bond measure, we don't know how the residents are gonna vote. We know that the need is there, and we know that with time, the need is only gonna be greater. And the more we wait, the worse off we are, because we, again, we should have done this 10 years ago. We didn't, so here we are. So if you're looking for time, money, the other thing with our infrastructure, if you don't have money, you're not gonna do anything for a long time, because everything takes time and money. And I think as you're going to see soon, the state and the federal government is gonna provide less funding for the infrastructure projects that historically have been there. So I think if we don't do this, we're only causing harm that people don't understand, and we will only see down the road when we are no longer in the space.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna speak first. So I appreciate what your thoughts, and here's the challenge. So the challenge, and I have to like highlight the description of needless delay. Here's the challenge, and I guess the dilemma, is we have, if we get back to focusing on what's before us is about the general plan, we have to do everything that's necessary to move that along as quickly as possible. Sure, there's going to be, if, you know, if we want to focus on infrastructure, then there's fiscal challenges to that. There's all sorts of ways we apply for grants. We look for the federal and state government to help. We do all these other things. It is not solely reliant on the local economic development. However, that is just an aside point to what the focus is around the general plan. And however, I do empathize with the challenges that the high school is having. I worry a lot about the overcrowding. I, too, full disclosure, met with Superintendent Tenenbaum and Mr. Small in their office, and we spoke about this, and our commitment was to support, the commitment that I made was to be able to support whatever was needed for the high school to expand once the general plan was complete, and our commitment was to get the general plan done as soon as possible, because it creates, they are not, they are not needless delays. They are very crucial delays, because there are other things that are waiting in the wings in order for us as a city, as an entire city, to be able to move forward without this general plan. So it is, the delays that it could cause for us if we don't put forward this general plan would be significant to our city, so we have to move forward with that as quickly as possible. So as we heard, the timeline is seven months from now, right? So we're there, I mean, if at all possible sooner than that would be even better. However, seven months is the timeline, and that's our commitment. We want to get that done. And we will, we are fully on board with supporting the high school in their efforts to expand as we move forward in that. And I would just encourage the high school to do any other things that they can do to move their project forward in preparation of that timeline. However, we have, if we do not move forward with this plan, if we put in more, I mean, with the work around the general plan, if we, if there are more delays to completing that general plan, that there will be significant impacts to the city as a whole. So we just can't afford to do that. All the other challenges will be there, the economic, infrastructure challenges are always gonna be there. However, we have got to prioritize that general planning, the completion of that general plan. So that's all that I will say on that. But I want to just ditto what Councilmember Resendez said to both Superintendent Tenenbaum, Mr. Small, that we, our commitment to collaborate is there, and our commitment is also to move forward with the general plan as soon as possible, so that you can move forward with your project as well. Okay, that's all I have to say. So I'm going to check in and see if we have any any other questions or quick comments before we move for a motion.
I just have a quick comment. I know I graduated from San Bonito, Ohio. I got a great education. It's an awesome school. A lot of accelerated and advanced classes that you can take. I got lucky, maybe. You know, my class size at the time, I just reread an article, I think it was in the Pinnacle, that in '98, we had the largest class size, and it was like 420 students. And they're a lot larger than that, you know? They're getting bigger. That was my graduating class, right? You know, we're outgrowing, we spent some money. We went to the voters, and what was it, 2016, something like that? We had a, Andy Harden was full of gopher holes, and it had lived its usable lifespan. We upgraded that high school, and we made some changes. Timing is really important, and we're getting through a really challenging time with the city when it came to the budget. City staff has done awesome. Very proud of everything you have done so far. Thank you for all the work that you have been doing, and just layered with that with the general plan. It's Herculean what you, what you and staff do, so I'm very proud. Really important, though, to kind of focus on getting that general plan done. If we can get it done in seven months, that would be excellent. But an additional high school is likely on the horizon for our town. We have just outgrown our britches, and we've, we've gotta, we've gotta keep class sizes down as much as possible. So I don't know what that looks like, but it definitely looks like it's likely on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, okay, with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion from the, from the city council.
I have motion to approve the temporary annexation policy as set forth by staff during the 2040 general plan update period and process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Thank you. Thank you to both of you gentlemen. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on with our agenda. Okay, so we're gonna move on to informational reports, committee assignment. Did I miss one?
You have one more item, 8.3.
I am so sorry.
It's still me.
I am so sorry. I'm so sorry. Yeah, I flipped the page too quickly, so sorry. 8.3, Ordinance Amendment Title 17, zoning, Chapter 17.10, industrial manufacturing zones to allow for specialized school in light industrial, parentheses, MI, and industrial park, industrial business park, IPB, in parentheses, zoning districts, and related amendments for clarity. Go ahead, Ms. Kelly, with your report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Yes, tonight is zoning ordinance amendment 2025-1. This is an amendment being brought forward to you by staff, and it's related to allowing vocational and trade schools in our industrial zoning districts. All right. So the M1 light industrial zoning district currently does not allow specialized schools. We came to realize this a few months back when we got an inquiry from a member of the public regarding a proposal. So, you know, they reached out to the planning department and said, hey, I'd like to do a trade school over in this area. It happened to be in our M1 district, and we were looking at our use tables and our definitions in our code. And it turns out that not only are trade schools not allowed in the industrial zoning district, they are not allowed in our code at all. And so staff proposed, and we brought this forward to the Planning Commission, I have some information on that, but we proposed to bring forward an amendment, a relatively minor one, because we believe that vocational and trade schools, such as, you know, constructions, trades, electricians, repairs, HVAC-type training, would not only be in appropriate use in our industrial and industrial business park zoning districts, but it would be a good use for the city overall and provide an opportunity for potential businesses and schools to come into the city and train career-minded folks. So these types of uses often need larger buildings, high ceilings, big open floor plans that really make sense in the industrial area and meets both existing facilities that we have and also types of facilities that are allowed to be constructed on our vacant land in those areas. So in addition to a proposal that the ultimate goal is to propose to allow vocational and trade schools in our industrial zoning districts, we are proposing to update our definitions related to all types of schools and our use tables for clarity. Currently, we don't have, we have definitions for some schools in our definition section of the zoning ordinance, and then you go to the use tables in our residential use table, our commercial and mixed-use use table, and our industrial use table, and it tells you a different use. So those tables say, schools, public, private. Your definitions are schools, elementary, secondary, college, university, and specialized education and training, which we'll talk a little bit more about. The definitions don't say public, private. Your use tables do. So we're proposing some clarification so that you have a new list of definitions for schools and use tables that reference those same definitions. On April 24th of this year, the Planning Commission considered this zoning amendment, and they did adopt a resolution making a recommended, recommendation to the council to adopt this. They are, we are proposing a minor change to distinguish between minor and major specialized education and training schools. So what we define specialized education and training schools as currently is your kind of, I guess I should probably read this one first, but our specialized education and training is kind of your classroom setting, arts, beauty schools, financial classes, health classes, personal growth things, those types of classroom settings. These are currently allowed in your commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. We're proposing to update this definition to distinguish a minor specialized education facility, which would allow no more than 15 participants and two instructors. And they have to meet our parking requirements, but we're proposing that instead of a conditional use permit, those minor facilities would be allowed by right. That would allow your kind of ceramics classes, art studios, those types of things to come into some of our existing commercial spaces without the use permit process. So that's a minor change we're proposing to make. Major ones, major specialized education and training, would be 16 or more, greater than two instructors, or propose in a location where they don't meet parking. We would propose they still require a conditional use permit. That way, we can look at the use more specifically to the location where they're proposed. Our big vocational and trade definition that we're proposing for a new definition to add to our zoning ordinance would be, it's up here as proposed, but a school providing specialized training related to a job or career, such as, as we mentioned, you know, plumbing, electricians, welding, installation, manufacturing, cabinet making, those types of vocational schools. This is a new definition we're proposing to add. We are also, as I mentioned, proposing to clean up the definitions. So you currently have schools, elementary, schools, secondary. We're proposing a slight modification to each of these, just to clarify. Schools, primary, that would be your TK through sixth grade. Schools, secondary, what kind of transitioned sixth grade, but sixth to 12th. So your middle and high schoolers, and these uses, we are just proposing to essentially change the names of the definitions and make them match our use tables. This is a summary of the whole, the whole ordinance use tables as proposed. Your columns on the left, or your rows, excuse me, are the six different categories of definitions we're proposing. So you have colleges and universities, primary schools, which again is K through sixth, secondary schools, seventh through 12th or sixth through 12th, our specialized education and training minor that we just talked about, our specialized education and training major, which is the 16 or more, and then vocational and trade, the new one. So in the first column, we're proposing to keep the current uses, which would be primary schools and secondary schools. They're currently allowed with a conditional use permit. Proposing the same thing. Our new vocational trade school, we are not proposing to permit them in our residential zoning districts, so those will be added to the table as not permitted. In the commercial zone, we are, again, not proposing to allow vocational and trade. Schools, both colleges and universities, as well as primary and secondary schools, are already permitted with a conditional use permit. No change there. And then specialized education and training minor, again, we talked about staffs proposing, and the commission is recommending that be permitted by right, and then a major with a conditional use permit. So in your commercial and mixed-use zones, and then in industrial, currently, primary and secondary schools are allowed with a conditional use permit. Specialized education and training, both major and minor, as proposed to be defined, are not allowed in our M1, which is your light industrial zoning district. They are currently allowed with a conditional use permit in industrial business park. We're not proposing a change there, so keeping CUP. And then you can't see it underneath the Zoom information, but this is where your CUP for vocational and trade is proposed. So allowing in both industrial business park and light industrial, these trade schools. This is a zoning amendment. It is categorically exempt from CEQA. It's not proposing any environmental change, and any future projects would be individually subject to environmental review. And in conclusion, our proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance will allow for vocational and trade schools in our industrial zoning districts, which will provide a place for schools of this type to operate within the city as they currently aren't allowed, and it'll offer job training opportunities for residents. And the proposed amendments to definitions and use tables provide that clarification that's needed. So we have consistent definitions and uses in our use tables across the code related to schools. With that, I'm recommending the council hold a public hearing and introduce an ordinance making this change. I do have one thing that I noticed in the ordinance, so if it is the council's pleasure tonight to introduce this ordinance and schedule a second hearing. In section one of the, the very first section for 1702-020, deleting text from our definitions, we should also be proposing to delete the current definition of schools, specialized education and training, and then add our new definition. So the ordinance currently reads to add our new definition, but it doesn't propose to delete the old one. So I would recommend that minor change to the ordinance as currently drafted for the second reading. But with that, I believe.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we need to do that to be able to make that minor change? To do, like, hold us another hearing? I mean-
No, you can make a motion to approve with the recommended revision.
Okay, okay, good, okay.
We would include the revision. If passed tonight, the revision would be in your packet at the next meeting in the consent for adoption with the change.
Okay, okay. Question? Questions from the council, go ahead, Councilmember Rosendez.
Thank you. Um, so typically when somebody's inquiring about something, there's, there probably is interest there for them to bring a school here. I'm just curious if you could disclose that. Who is it that's inquiring or are they thinking about bringing a school here?
I, I will be completely honest with you. I don't remember. It was quite a while ago and I think it might've even been when I was out on vacation. This has been in works for, I don't know, six or seven months. It was just a, an inquiry, we got to the planning email and we just looked into the code and the answer that we gave them was unfortunately, no, that's not permitted. And then we went on the path of, you know, that's something that probably makes sense to be permitted. So we were gonna propose an ordinance.
Yes, there's no application that was submitted. It was a prospective, um, party that was looking to rent a facility and asked before they rented if that was an allowable use, which is good. We see that often where folks get themselves into a lease because they were told they could do something somewhere and then they come to us and we have the unpleasant task of telling them that that's not the case. And so, um, that's how that came to light.
And, and I would imagine it's not the high school because they have all the, that they need, but it could potentially benefit them in the future, especially if they're gonna build a new school and plan to expand later. I'm all for it, a hundred percent. I think it's, I'm glad that you guys caught this and brought it up to us because again, the more opportunity that we can offer our community in these types of ways, the better. So I, I'm, of course, wanna hear from the public, but I was just curious about that. I just think it's important to disclose that to the public, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions or comments from this side of the dice? Okay, none? Okay, so let me then open the public hearing. Do you have any comments?
Yes, Mayor Stevens, we have one, Dr. Sean Tenenbaum.
Please, Superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you.
And you will have three minutes.
Well, good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council, uh, City Manager and Staff, Sean Tenenbaum, proud Superintendent of the High School District. It's good to see you again, Mayor. Thank you very much for being at the bailorama tonight. Um, I know our parents were enthused to have the mayor there, so thank you. Um, I also wanna compliment both, uh, Councilmember, uh, Rosendez and the mayor. Uh, on behalf of Jeff and myself, uh, we're very encouraged by the, uh, communication tonight. We're also very encouraged by the, the meeting that we had previously. Um, and I, I do want to, in the spirit of partnership, relay that, um, that positivity goes a long way. So I wanna thank both of you publicly and praise you for, uh, the encouragement this evening. I also wanna compliment City Manager, uh, Dave Marioni. Uh, I know I've called him and texted him multiple times regarding this item, uh, and so I wanted to thank him for the, the detailed conversation today. Um, and I'm just gonna share it just in terms of transparency. Um, you know, the high school is blessed to have thirteen career pathways. We have two functioning academies with a third on their way. Uh, we've been in the C T E vocational trade business for, uh, many, many decades. Um, and I shared with David today that, uh, I think it's really important as you're looking at an ordinance such as this, to really make sure that we're transparent with the community of what student age population these particular schools would serve, what grade span they may serve and if they're post-secondary or not. Uh, I explained to David that, you know, I've got many phone calls regarding an item such as this, thinking that we were expanding our program to the, uh, commercial area, uh, or what school might be going in there and what particular programs. Uh, so I think in terms of transparency, looking at that. The second thing is, uh, we wanna articulate. Uh, we articulate with Gavin, we have an excellent relationship with them, uh, Deanna Cabrio, uh, you name the, the community college and the trade program, we're articulating. Uh, because if we're articulating with a trade school, uh, typically there's a reciprocation, uh, they gain and we gain as well and ultimately our students benefit. Uh, and last but not least, I would just ask that you look at the ordinances to make sure that there are no cannabis facilities over there. I know for ourselves, when we're taking a look at, you know, location, uh, it is very important that we're making sure that we're meeting that setback. Uh, but as I have thirty seconds left, I do wanna say and compliment, um, I, uh, am very encouraged by what I heard this evening and I thank you on behalf of the thirty-four-hundred-plus teenagers that are gonna be on my campus tomorrow morning, uh, screaming with positive energy, uh, to keep up that, uh, positive partnership. Thank you.
And thank you Superintendent Tenenbaum. It was great, yeah. If, if the bailor member has any reflection, there'll be a lot of screaming and yelling tomorrow. It was, it was great. Um, okay, so, uh, any other public comments?
There are no other public comments.
Okay, so we close the public hearing now and, um, check again, any questions, comments? Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Rosendez.
Thank you. Um, I, I see a lot of opportunity with this, um, whether it's even the unions bringing, like moving out here and, and building a, like a center for them to be able to trade, right, train, because they have these types of centers out there. So if we have connections, I would encourage that to move forward. Um, I'm a unionized teacher. I, I'll be honest, I do not really like the idea of non-unionized teachers being in our community, but I have to support them because I once was not one and now I'm the president of the union. So I think that there's opportunity for us to, you know, to grow in that respective. Um, so I will never turn away an opportunity for our kids and for our community members. Um, and so I'm really optimistic about this, but, so I thank you guys for that. But I think Dr. Tenenbaum brought up a good point as well. One of the use permits in the industrial, in our city is the use of cannabis. So I would like to include some language in there and, and I guess I would, I'm just a little bit, um, concerned about if they have, let's say they have a permit and they have not moved forward, like we have some existing, um, uses out there or let's say permits out there that have not moved forward. Like I'd really like to prioritize the education and the opportunities for our community over that. So I don't know how we include that, but I would ask that staff, um, look into that and that my colleagues would, would also support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosendez. Um, questions or comments on this side of the dice?
I think this is a potentially great thing for the community and young adults and even older folks looking for a, uh, you know, young adults looking for the beginning of their career, older folks getting back in and wanting to do like a, uh, mid-career switch-up, um, whether the high school got involved and, you know, you rented a facility and did some additional training, uh, I, I went to the high school, I keep saying it, great, great education, fantastic. I took three R O P classes, I took automotives, industrial technology, there was a business admin class, can't remember exactly the name of the class, um, but they were great. So whether it came from a, you know, a public institution or if it came from private companies, uh, I think this is a great idea to, you know, help people further their careers or even begin them.
Great.
All still there. Years, years ago, I had more hair. Gotta find out what we're gonna do with Tom Hagen. What are you gonna do with that?
Okay, so just, just, uh, a couple of questions, um, for you, Ms. Kelly. Um, so let me just, let's, can we, can I just clarify that for this amendment, we are, we are just simply asking for those areas that are currently zoned as light industrial and industrial business park, that it is in those zoning areas that we allow for additional language to include, um, vocational type schools, using the language that you put, that you had on the slide, right? So it's in those areas that exist, that are in those zoning areas that exists currently?
Yes.
And any that we may rezone in the future?
So we're proposing to add a new definition that doesn't exist and then allow that use in two zoning districts, our two industrial zoning districts.
So to the Superintendent's point about the cannabis piece, so I, what my thought around that was, uh, uh, and this is, obviously I wanna make, make sure that we get ahead of this so that we're sure that we're, that we're putting proper language in there to address that issue, um, is that if there was a proposed applicant that wanted to put a school out there, that they would consider whether or not cannabis, uh, type business or school or whatever, whatever it is, i- is there in that same building, right? We would kinda do it on a case by case and whether or not that is enough to, uh, address the concerns that we don't wanna mix, like especially high school age students in a vocational school with that. I mean, it, 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 is there some, would we need specific language or is it just something that we would consider on an application project basis?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, uh, it's not something that you would need language to consider. You would, you certainly could, but that's a whole other discussion of like standards and, and regulations that this ordinance is not getting into. This ordinance is specifically defining a new use and putting it in our use tables. And then as all schools currently require C U Ps, conditional use permits in all of our zoning districts currently, we're proposing that same use permit process for this new type of school. So because they require a conditional use permit, you'd be looking individually at the operations plan of every proposal, you'd be looking at their age ranges, you'd be looking at their times, you'd be looking at their uses and you'd be looking at where they are in relation to existing uses. And then I will just say that that's the same process that you have for a cannabis use. So.
Right.
Potentially you'd be looking at, um, you know, if you approved a vocational school with a use permit in one location, they started up and then you, in the future, had a conditional use permit proposal for a cannabis use, you would be looking at the context of that cannabis use and you would be looking vice versa. So you would always look at the context of what's existing under the use permit you're proposing or in reviewing. So you would be able to look individually at each application when you're considering that it would be a discretionary permit.
Okay.
And, and I also believe by law, a cannabis facility can't be within, I think it's six hundred feet of any school facility with that.
There's something like that.
Services, children, eighteen, under.
Yeah, I think there's, there's.
Um, so you'd have to, you just by law have to follow.
Have to figure that out. So it's, it's, so it's not needed in the ordinance, we just look at it at, on a project by project basis. Yeah, okay, okay. And I wanted just to be really clear about that because I wouldn't want to impact anything that we have going related to cannabis, especially existing things and, but we still wanna encourage this type of, uh, of school to come in if it seems that it, it makes sense for those areas. Okay, thanks for that clarification. And then just before, before I recognize you, Councilmember Rosendez, uh, we don't need to, again, it's kinda following along the same lines, or maybe I should rephrase that, do we need to, uh, specify anything related to age and or grade level of the school in the ordinance?
I think while you could, I don't think that I would recommend it. You still have your primary and secondary education definition, so if something falls into that, they'll fall into that use and fit where they fit in your use table. So in our residential and commercial zones, those are already allowed uses. I believe actually they're allowed in industrial, uh, no, they're not allowed, excuse me, they're not allowed in industrial. So you already have primary and secondary to capture, you know, your standard education from K to twelve and, but I think vocational and trade, I would be concerned, you know, if someone wanted to allow, you know, maybe someone graduated high school at sixteen or got their G E or at seventeen and they wanted to go into a trade school that was open and then because we have an age limit in our definition, we would have to restrict that use permit. I don't think it's necessary and I think you'd look at the use that's proposed and the operations plan that you're proposing on that individual permit level.
So in other words, with the language that you proposed in the slide, whether it is a high school program, whether it is a post-high school program, whether it is just a generic vocational school, like, uh, that allows both high schoolers, adults, it, that, that would fall under that definition.
Yeah.
Right? It wouldn't preclude any of those applicants from, okay.
Yeah, I think these six definitions will help staff guide people to the right definition so then we can further guide them to the right zoning district and process.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so that's, that's all I wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that. Um, okay, Councilmember Rosendez, did you have another question or comment?
Yep, I was gonna say to that point, you're correct, the schools also have the same laws. So I think that we can move forward without having to adopt further language.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, great. Okay, so any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, um, so let's move along, um, any, uh, motions from the council?
And is that with the revision Ms. Kelly stated?
Right.
Yes.
I was just thinking about that, yeah, I was, I motion to approve with the, uh, definition change that Ms. Kelly, uh, put forth.
So you already have, um, you already have that motion?
Okay.
Do, you could make the second.
Oh, I second it. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just gonna process question. If we wanted to add that additional comment about the deletion of the other into this motion, would we have to, like, strike this one down and then redo it or?
No, that is, I've clarified it. I clarified Councilmember Rosendez's motion, so you're good.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, so we have first and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that passed, so then we need a second motion for that, the, the other one? No, we don't. Okay, good. Okay, we're good then. So it passed, thank you for that, thank you for that. Okay, so now we are gonna go into the next item of committee assignments. Any, um, uh, reports from, uh, council members? Remember this is a time to report on any ad hocs, any, um, uh, standing committees or any other types of, of committee assignments.
Yeah, and Mayor, we do have the committee assignments there for discussion.
I am so sorry, I am like, I'm, I must be really tired today, I'm so sorry. Uh, but yeah, we're having a discussion about our committee assignments, I am so sorry. So we are going to be, uh, having a discussion about our committee assignments, so we're gonna review and update the city council committee assignments. Dave, is there anything that you wanted to add on that one? No? Okay. Okay, so this is a time for all of us to just talk about the issues that we had talked about in the past related. I spoken to all of you at one point or another in since, uh, January about some concerns about like scheduling or maybe too many assignments or, or wanting to be on certain committees, but, um, this is a time for us to maybe make some changes to those assignments. So go ahead, Councilmember Rosendez.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, I've had some conflicts, so I've, even the lady was gracious enough to thank me, I've never been to a three C E, um, committee meeting. So I was wondering, Councilmember Morales, I know that you've done it in the past or if anybody else would like to, uh, be a part of that. I can't make it because it conflicts with my work schedule, um, so I'm gonna ask to be removed from that and I'm happy to trade. I think we've done that in the past before, as long as it, as long as it fits within my work, uh, schedule. The other thing is, again, I've, because of my work schedule, I've never gone to the fire, um, advisory committee, council member, sorry, Vice Mayor Pache has gone to every single one for me and I'm hoping that he would continue that and that I would be taken off of there. And again, I'm willing to take on any additional ones. And I know that, um, Councilmember Deanda has, well, I'm not sure, I guess we're just gonna have a conversation. Councilmember Morales, are you currently on the senior advisory committee? Cause I know you do a lot of work with them.
Yeah, no, I, so I think, um, so.
I think she was wanting to get off that and ask if Councilmember Morales, and I feel like I keep putting Councilmember Morales's name out there a lot, but I'm, I'm happy to take on some of your committees if you're willing to accept.
The, the, uh, the senior, um, the, the three A, um, area agency and agent slash senior committee, that one meets on Friday, on, on a Friday and in the morning and that's really challenging for most of us to make that meeting and that's part of the challenge. So, um, it, we, we do need to have somebody, I mean, it'd be great to have somebody sit on that, but it does meet in the morning, so I don't know if that's something that, would you be able to do that, Councilman? Okay, okay, so good. So then I'm in a, so it looks like we can do that, we'll swap, we can swap Councilmember Deanda and, um, Councilmember Morales. Um, and for, and any others that you had concerns about?
No, three C E, I think.
And fire advisory.
Councilmember Morales is Wednesday mornings, if I'm not mistaken. Um, yeah, and if not, then somebody who has a little bit more of a flexibility in their schedule. And then, yeah, I was just wondering if Vice Mayor Pache was willing to continue his service on the fire advisory committee.
So the fire advisory, so currently you are, currently you are the, you're the alternate? So I'm on it and by the way, it's meeting this, this Thursday, um, in the morning. I wanna say it's eleven, is that right, Dave? It's eleven, nine, nine to, nine to ten thirty, I believe. So, um, you're the alternate, I'm on it and I'm fine with staying on it. It's challenging for Councilmember Rosendez because of the time, the timing of it and it, and it is an in-person meeting, so is that something that you can do as, the fire advisory? And so move from being the alternate and be an actual, a member of that, of the fire advisory.
I, I mean, I definitely work during the day in 9:00 AM as, I can go to as many as possible.
So if I can, Mayor Stevens, I was just wondering if we could propose to change, change the time to a time that I can make it. So I can make it, I think Wednesday's at four, but I don't know if that conflicts with, is it intergovernmental and COG?
Possibly.
Wait, those are Thursdays. I'm sorry. Thursday at four, we should be good.
This is the first Thursday of every other month.
If the.
So I don't know. I mean, can we, can we hold off on that one till we clarify whether or not we can make that change? Because it's gonna have to, I mean, go ahead.
It would just require in a bylaw amendment of that committee. So they, their bylaws state when and where those meetings occur, and so that would need to go to that committee to be able to change it first.
Okay.
So you could propose that at the next meeting if you wanted to.
Okay, okay. So for now then, we're gonna put that one on hold. Put that one on hold so then we can see about that. If we, if there is a time change, then we'll leave the assignments as is. And if not, then we'll come back and regroup on that one. And I will, I mean, that's one that I can be, that I can get on. For me, the challenging one is intergovernmental. So I personally would like to have somebody else cover my seat on that one. And I know you're already on it, Councilmember Resendez, so it's a challenging one, and it's a Wednesday at?
Intergovernmental is Thursday, every other month.
At four.
At four.
And it's, it's every month, and it's currently in San Juan.
And it's in San Juan in person.
Oh, of every month, yes.
And, yeah.
Yeah, so that one, there's been discussion of quarterly on that. I believe the intergov, intergovernmental adopted that. And I believe it's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
At 4:00 PM.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, that is new. This, this document's old.
Yeah, this is, this is based on, the document that's provided is what was given at, back in December 17th. So, so they've moved to quarterly. I, I'm not clerking it this year, so I didn't know that one.
Did we officially, we did officially move to quarterly?
Mayor Stevens, I don't remember if it was quarterly or bi-monthly.
I think I missed the last one. That's a challenging meeting for me to get to. So, okay. So for now then, that's another one that maybe we just table it because unless you want to jump in or either one of you want to jump into that one, it's, if it does meet quarterly, 4 o'clock in San Juan Batista, and, and the, and the issue with that is that there, in order to meet the quorum, it has, you have to be in person. Some of the committees allow for Zoom participation and still be counted as part of the quorum, and that one does not allow for that. So that's, that can be a challenge. Okay.
I, I can probably help out on intergovernmental if it's at 4:00 PM in San Juan.
In San Juan.
In San Juan. I think I can help out with that.
Okay. Okay, so I wanna, I, I wanna go ahead and then make that, that switch then. I'm, I'm gonna be out and then you'll be in for that one. Okay, so those were the ones for me that were more, were challenging. Are there any for you, Councilmember Morales, or that you want to be considered for other, others that you're interested in?
On Ambag, I thought we had Vice Mayor Pache on that?
Uh huh.
Because it does, it says.
Are you?
Oh, yeah, I'm on that one.
Yeah. Is that something that you still want to continue doing? Because I know that's something that Councilmember.
I've been monitoring quite a bit.
Okay, okay.
It's the second Wednesday, yeah. I have it on my calendar.
And then what time does 3CE meet?
I believe, also Councilmember Morales, that it's not even monthly.
It's, you gotta look on their website. It switches each year, meetings scheduled on 3CE, or 3C energy.
It might be quarterly. Does it say? It doesn't say on our sheet. It might be quarterly. It's Wednesday mornings, and I'm with my students. So I've never gone.
I think if I can look at the schedule to see when, then I, that's something I might be able to do.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna put, we'll put you down as tentative then, Councilmember Morales for 3CE. Okay, I think those were the, the biggies that were challenging right now.
Can I summarize them just to make sure that I've got all of them accurate? Okay, so for intergovernmental, Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Stevens is going to come off and Councilmember Pache will be serving. Councilmember Resendez will continue to serve on intergovernmental, and then Councilmember Morales will continue to be the alternate. For Ambag, Councilmember Pache, Vice Mayor Pache will serve on it. For the area agency on agents, area agency on aging advisory council, Councilmember Deanda will be, no longer be the alternate, and Councilmember Morales will serve as the alternate. And then for 3CE, Councilmember Resendez will be coming off, and tentatively, Councilmember Morales will be serving as our representative depending on the meeting times.
The, the only thing that you said was Councilmember Morales will be the alternate. She will not be the, she'll be the appoint, the one appointed for the AAA.
Okay, so you said in place of Councilmember Deanda, who's currently the alternate?
She's, she's current.
I have you as the, I have you as the appointee and Councilmember Deanda as the alternate for.
Okay, we had switched that, and I, that didn't get updated. So, because I've never been on it. So Councilmember Deanda is not on it at all because she cannot make the meetings, even if she's an alternate. I don't mind being the alternate for that one, actually. I can, might, might be able to make it. But if, if Councilmember Morales can be the primary on that, and then occasionally I can be on it, then I, then I will attend in her stead. Okay, all right. Okay. And then I guess that those are the ones, those are the challenging ones right now. Okay. Okay, so anything else that we need, that we need to do on that, on that one?
Mayor Stevens, I'm looking online. It looks like, from what I can tell, it's quarterly, Councilmember Morales, Wednesdays at 11:30. That's what I can see. Okay.
Yeah.
The elected officials serve on the policy board, and then some are on the executive committee. And then at the staff level, there's appointments onto the operation board, and then there's some smaller staff committees. So it, it meets approximately quarterly.
Okay. Okay, so then Councilmember Morales will be the, the appointment for the 3CE.
And you're allowed to meet on Zoom. We just have to notice it as a public meeting place.
Okay.
Would you be able to remind me of the intergovernmental committee?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's changed from what I have here. It's Wednesday?
It's when?
It had been meeting the first Wednesday of the month at 4:00 PM. And at the last meeting, there was a discussion to move it to quarterly. And I have to go back and look. I believe it was passed, so.
It was passed. I don't know if it was quarterly or bi-monthly, but it was extended out in order for some more robust discussion. Yeah, so it's not monthly.
Okay, I'll look it up.
And, and is there somebody that Vice, Vice Mayor can reach out to to get the specific, like next one, who is it?
Yes, I'll put you in touch with the San Juan Batista city clerk.
Okay.
And handles that.
Okay, good. Okay. All right. Okay, I think we, I think we're done with that one then. Anything else that we need to do for that one before we move on to the council, what I was trying to do before, which was to get the, the committee reports? Okay, so I'm gonna move this, move us along then to number two, council reports. Anything to report from council members on any committees, any ad hocs, et cetera?
With all, everything going on prior to the biker rally, the council meeting on 6/16/25, I didn't report on as well as I could have about the Ambag Board of Directors meeting as relates directly to Hollister and San Benito County specifically. I've met with cities. So a little bit of background, on June 11th, Ambag, Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, had an update on the regional early action planning grants of 2021. The grants were to accelerate infill development that facilitates housing supply, choice, and affordability. Affirmatively furthering fair housing is a second major objective of REAP 2.0 and reducing vehicle miles traveled. One of the big callouts is that Hollister was allocated $169,380, the deadline to spend those funds, much of which does sound like, maybe Dave can, can help me out here, some kind of a ballpark. It looks like we've allocated most of those funds, if not.
Yeah, no, those, those funds are allocated, we still have through the end of March, I believe, to spend those.
March 31st, yeah.
It's to fund objective design standard creation for the downtown area.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, just wanted to get that back on the radar. That was the big key call out for that particular meeting.
Great, thank you. Any other reports that you have? Okay, Councilmember Morales, any reports from you? No. So I'll just quickly report. I, as we mentioned, early fire advisory will be meeting on Thursday. We will be restarting discussions around the, the fire district feasibility study. So that's gonna be a big major part, as well as a report from Chief Golding. So that, so we will, I will come back, we will come back with some information at the next meeting about that. But that's, I'm glad to see that that's back on as a point of discussion for that committee. Also, as members of the animal ad hoc committee, Councilmember Deanda and I have been meeting and having discussions with that group, and we are continuing to move along to solve some problems and, and just open up the lines of communication with our, with our community towards resolving some issues related to the shelter. Nothing specific to report on that. However, we will, we did not meet last month. We will meet again in September. And so we'll have more to report on that. And then finally, we, as the member, one of the two appointees for the rally ad hoc committee, we've been debriefing on the rally, getting some good feedback from staff about all the things that went, that went well, and some of the things that maybe we, we could do better next time, sort of lessons learned. So those discussions have been very fruitful, and we will be continuing those discussions, including stuff related to public safety, as well as layout, as well as some things with our promoter and the vendor. So we'll have more to report on that. And that's all I have. Councilmember Resendez, do you have any?
I was just on the biker rally ad hoc committee. You just reported on that. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's, that's all for the, for the council reports. So city manager report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna go into closed session. So we have our closed session items, then I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. 10.1, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 5495 7.6. Agency-designated representative, city manager David Marioni and city attorney Mary Lerner. Employee organization service employees International Union SEIU Local 521, Hollister Firefighters Union HFFU Local 3395, Hollister Peace Officer Association HPOA and unrepresented employees. 10.2, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 5495 6.8. Property Briggs Alley, alley adjacent to 427 San Benito Street and Brown's Alley, alley adjacent to 650 San Benito Street. Agency negotiator David Marioni, city manager, under negotiation terms and conditions. Item 10.3, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 5495 6.9 of the government code. Two cases. 10.4, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 5495 6.9 of the government code deciding whether to initiate litigation. Two cases. One is Purdue-Sackler National Opioid Settlement. The other is Alvegin, Amneal, Apotics, Hikma, and Divior Mylan Sun Zitis National Opioid Settlement. 10.5, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 5495 6.8. Property 190 Maple Avenue, Hollister, California 95023. Agency negotiator David Marioni, city manager, under negotiation purchase terms and conditions. 10.6, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9. Initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 5495 6.9 of the government code deciding whether to initiate litigation. One case.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. Okay, so now we're going to clear the chambers and move into closed session, but let's take a quick five-minute break before we start our closed session.